...order, and could we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the minutes, business meeting April 12th, 2015, or workshop of April 22nd, 2015. Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Just a discussion item. I was not here on the 12th, so if you could, so if you could separate those two, I don't think I should be voting on minutes for the 12th. I was not here that day, so if we could, so we can move on.
We'll do just a business meeting of April 12th then.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 13th, business meeting.
April 13th, it says 12. Okay. I'm sorry.
It says 13th, I guess.
13th was Monday. 13th was Monday.
All right.
The 15th was.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John's not.
I'm...
John's abstained.
Abstained, yes.
All right, now can we have the workshop of April 22nd, 2015?
22nd?
Yeah, it was just the three of us.
22nd was last week.
Yep.
Yes, I move to...
To approve the minutes from the workshop?
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, citizens input, we have any? Yeah, it's a citizens input, that's what it is.
Back again, it's a matter of Woodco still being in violation of the path of travel. The town was given a prior order from the AAD that they were to do something about it and ban the grills if they kept doing this. Last year over the period of the year, I requested and was told that I would get a meeting with the Disability Commission, which still has never happened. The Disability Commission has actually been in violation of the requirements by the state for at least seven years. They're supposed to have public meetings. There's no record of any meetings, no minutes, nothing, since 2006, other than Mr. Woodbury has done the year-end. And, I mean, it's just, I keep hitting a stone wall, people tell me that they own part of the sidewalk, they don't. It's the original deeds, or what they're basing it on, the original sidewalk is basically under the buildings. You conclude that by looking at old pictures, and it's just an ongoing thing. Myself, I served in Marine Corps, as such, I earned the right to be able to walk down a sidewalk without being obstructed or anything. As a disabled person under the ADA and the AAD, those rights are guaranteed, and have just been ignored.
So you're saying that you can't walk down that sidewalk?
I'm saying that there's certain guidelines that they have to follow, and that on many occasions, I have been obstructed. They're supposed to keep that path of travel open at all times.
Except when they're delivering stuff in there, they can have a certain amount of time to deliver.
Right, but there's, like today, they take and they put their appliances in path of travel, they open the boxes, prep them and everything else. You know, this isn't a matter of them moving something inside, this is them doing the work on the sidewalk. This has been an ongoing thing. They've expanded their business, so now they can't do the stuff inside, so they do it outside on the sidewalk. And if we use the fact that they're saying that they own part of the sidewalk, which I have never asked for those parts to be met, under the ADAAG, if they own the sidewalk, they're supposed to maintain a 52-inch path of travel, which is to remain open at all times because it's connected to public transportation.
Me or you?
Uh-huh.
Me or you? Those two issues, one is the grills and one is the sidewalk and path of travel. We haven't been ignoring this issue, we've gone through this issue, we've dealt with Mr. Hopkins, we've dealt with the state offices, we've dealt with the federal offices, and we've had communications on that. We sent notices to Woodco, they were part of that, so it hasn't been ignored, okay? We're gonna have to agree to disagree on the grill issue in terms of the sidewalk, okay? Let me finish, okay? We're gonna have to agree to disagree, because we've been over this, we've gone through the deeds, we've gone through the plans, we have all surveyed that whole street, the building inspector made his determination, we sent information to the state, and they said that that was fine. The second part of the issue was the travel, was that they can do it as part of deliveries, and they were notified that they're supposed to, you know, can't be a prolonged amount of time. So what I would say to you is if it's a prolonged amount of time, you need to notify us when it's happening. If you come in now, I'm just gonna call them and say you can't do that, I can't do anything about it. If there's, if they're out there for a certain amount of time, for 10 minutes, a half hour, an hour, you've gotta call us, and then we'll go down there, we're not circling the town, we don't have people to do that.
I've been providing pictures.
After the fact. I need to know, if you call me at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, Mr. Bailey, if you call me at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and they're out there on the sidewalk, I'll have the building inspector go down there, okay? If you send me a picture a month after it's happened, I can't do anything about it except for notify them that they're not allowed to do it.
I was sending them in the days that they were happening through email. This is the order from the Architectural Access Board, with the list of what they found to be 21 violations. I mean, it's not like there hasn't been an order already in existence from the AAD.
As far as I know, the order, that order was closed, we...
It was closed because the people that are responsible for reporting back to them, which is the Disability Commission, and it is part of the law, that when it's reported to them, they're supposed to forward it to the proper authorities.
We're not gonna get anywhere tonight, this is probably the fifth time we've gone through this, John. And I don't know if you want to set up a meeting with the state to handle this, but I think we've done what we can on our end. You know, again, I'm not gonna be, I'm not out in the street, walking around the street to see if Woodco's got a refrigerator on the street on the sidewalk. If it's happening, you need to call me while it's happening, and you gotta show and demonstrate us that you're not able to cross it, okay, over a certain amount of time. I'm not, in my, I'm not walking the sidewalk on a daily basis, you need to call me when it happens.
You're not following the law, that's what you're doing, you're finding, you're trying to find ways to circumvent the law.
Do you want me to set up a chair or a...
I'm gonna have the meeting with the Disability Commission. The Disability Commission is required by law to have those meetings.
I'll turn that over to...
They're supposed to be public meetings.
You're right, which we keep, as you know...
Yeah, I know. We have a lot of committees that don't meet because we don't have enough people to sit in.
We don't have a quorum, and that's what happened, and we've requested several meetings.
You've had eight years.
John, listen to me, I'm not gonna debate it tonight, okay, other than, everything you asked us to do, we've completed, we've done. We've been to Boston, you told me that it was the Justice Department, I was in contact with them. I'm the only one doing anything with it to try to solve this problem, okay?
Actually, what I originally sent you, which I sent to your email address, not the Yahoo address...
Which I still have, because I don't delete anything.
So it's, and all of my complaints have been ADA, which is Department of Justice, and everything keeps getting sent to Boston, which has no authority on it.
But, no, when I talked to the Justice Department, because you gave me the number.
Right.
I talked directly to them, and their interpretation is different than what you told me. So, and I made the offer to you before, to sit down, we'll call them together, because evidently what you're telling them and relaying is not the message getting to them. And we can debate this till the cows come home, but we've done everything you've asked, and you keep saying... Wait a minute, let me talk for a minute. You keep saying that the Disability Commission or the town, we have an enforcement officer, which is the building inspector. So I would say that if it's happening, the time of day, because unfortunately, most of this board works a full-time job, and we're not available to run up every time, and I try to get there as fast as I can, you need to call Otis, the Building Department, when it's happening, and file a complaint with them. Because waiting a week, or waiting a day, isn't gonna solve it.
I was sending the pictures on the same day.
And we've been down there, I know, and I took those pictures, and I went down. And every time you get down there, it's not happening then. So your timeframe is saying it happens for six hours, or it happened all day, okay? And when I get there and it's not there, what do you want me to say? Here, here's the pictures, okay, which I've done, go talk to them, okay? And there's never a solution at that point, because it's always after the fact. And what I'm telling you is there are process, is please, just get a hold of the building inspector, he is our enforcement officer.
Right.
And that's where it falls at that point.
But then, I was just saying, they're not the only ones who handle deliveries on that street. Obviously, the topography on that side of the street prevents people from, you know, the storefronts are in the front, so you have Chef's Sal, you have the flowers, they're doing deliveries, I see flowers coming in and out of there, people have to do deliveries in and out.
Right, that's what's typical, they go directly in.
Right.
They don't stick the stuff out on the sidewalk for the entire day, which Woodco does consistently.
And the entire day, I mean, I need to see an entire, I mean, entire day. I mean, if you call me and say they're out there for an hour, I think that's a problem, you know, but I, all day is kinda hard to...
And it was just, I mean, I've...
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna solve the issue, John.
I mean, when I talked to Mr. Hopkins, he told me that the original story, he was told was misrepresenting, because I sent him the pictures, he said he wasn't aware of that, and that something should have been done. When I talked to the, it's not a matter, it's an either-or thing with the grills. They can have the grills...
The grills, we're gonna disagree on the grills, okay? We have a survey that shows it's on private property, and the sidewalk there, we measured it, Gary and I went out there with a tape measure.
And the grills are 20 inches wide, that sidewalk...
We forward those pictures, Dan.
It's gotta be at least four feet after the grills.
Listen.
Yes.
Listen, guys, this is citizens input.
We measured seven feet.
Seven feet, okay, I mean, if you can't get by seven feet, I mean, you know...
I'm saying that...
Oh, and when they're unloading the refrigerators or whatever the heck they're doing, how long are they blocking the sidewalk where you can't go by?
When they start all the way down it, plus...
No, no, how long do you have to wait to go by when they're unloading it, or do they move?
Half the time when they, all right, today, it was hour, about an hour.
You stood there for an hour?
No, I didn't stand there, what I'm saying is they were blocking the majority of it.
The whole sidewalk, it's seven feet wide, he just said, and refrigerator is 36 inches.
And they are ordered to maintain a 36-inch...
John, I think you're just looking for something to bitch about, okay, plain and simple, okay, really.
Nope.
I think, I think we're gonna have to resolve it here, I think...
I think that what has to happen, though, in John's defense, is if it is happening...
You gotta call, you gotta email them, or anything else, you gotta call them then, and then come down.
This is the first time this has been said.
Well, that's what you gotta do.
This is the first time, I've been doing this for three years now. And I have tried to find, there's been no compromise, because nobody's ever gotten with me to talk about it. And if they had just kept their grills at 140 Main Street where they were originally, before they started using the entire block...
Well, he owns it all.
I never would have said anything.
He owns that whole section again.
John, I think we're used...
What you're saying then is anybody who has a business and owns property anywhere in the town can set up anything in front of their properties.
Like he said, it's seven feet.
As long as it's not blocking the right of way, which is the sidewalk, yes.
I mean, that's what they were doing.
And if you're saying, John, if they're down by the bus stop, which is in front of Dr. Macklin's office, yeah, they're out of bounds, but that's...
And they, they're starting from down there, and you have to stop and wait while they carry, they bring their refrigerators all the way up to 148? Because there's not enough room to go around them. 148 is the old Michael's Pizza, the cream condemned.
The other one.
Right after Chef's Sal.
Which is probably true, but the width of that is the same, so...
And when they're bringing something that big up the middle, and they're leaving you this much room on each side, that is a violation.
Well, if they're moving, if they're taking it out and bringing it up to the truck, how long are they there?
They're unloading entire truckloads.
Guys, guys, hold on, we're not, we can debate all night, and we can get frustrated, but I'm just telling you, John, honest, if that...
I'm just looking for compliance, if the thing was open...
Look, we're not, I'm not arguing your rights, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, unfortunately, and I've asked you, as you know, to get on the commission, which I asked them.
I asked, I, it's sent in the papers, last year you said it was...
I'm not gonna debate it here tonight, John, I'm just saying, I'm just stating my point here, is that if you didn't know, shame on us for not letting you know, but the building inspector is our enforcement officer. And I can tell you that everything that you've done has been passed on to the town administrator, through the Building Department, through Boston, and even the phone call to the Justice Department. I mean, I don't know what else to do when somebody tells you is that it's not a violation, okay, and you're telling me otherwise.
And I'm telling you what they're telling me.
I know, I know, and it's, he said, she said, and you know what, it's all interpretation, I can respect that. What I don't respect is the back and forth, and trying to come in and thinking we did nothing, because we always have.
That's where, where I, where I see the difference here.
If you tell me one time I've never gotten back, excuse me, if you tell me one time I've never gotten back to you, or never answered any questions from you, that's a lie.
There have been several, but it's been an ongoing...
Okay, because it's been continuation all the way through, so at that point...
The one thing that ended all of this last year is if we had that meeting and made the phone call as a group, that was my request, is that phone call meeting as a group.
And it was mine along with you, was it not?
What's that?
It was mine along with you, I said that's the only way to solve the interpretation.
And it still hasn't happened, and that's why I'm here.
Unfortunately, again, unfortunately, it doesn't fall here, okay, it falls within the commission, which unfortunately, we don't have enough members to even get a quorum, okay? So for me to sit there with you isn't gonna solve it, is it?
That's not, but I did, I put in my papers to try to join it, and then I...
I'm not gonna argue that, but at that point tonight, our discussion for this selectmen's meeting is over, and we will follow up. And please, I'm telling you the avenue you have to go, I don't know what else to do. It's not, I can't go down there and say, listen, I'm the zoning enforcement officer, I'm not. So I have about as much right as you walking by saying, hey, I don't like the grills there, tough, you know what I mean?
I'm complaining about the grills, that they weren't doing the work in the path of travel.
And we're not gonna solve it here tonight, John, I just don't know what else to say to you, I've done everything that's been asked of me, and we're still at this point where you're not satisfied, so now, let's go to the next step.
The order they came from was if they keep blocking part of the track that they couldn't keep...
Which every time, but the end is over, I can't solve it here tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, aside from the grills, and the refrigerator and sidewalk, what is your solution? What do you think we should do?
Right.
How do we enforce that? Because if we, if we call them and say, let me just, let me finish a question, if we call them and say we have a report, we have 20 reports, whatever, of you blocking the sidewalk, what do you think we should do, other than what we've done, for that particular purpose? Forget the grills for a second.
What they could do to be compliant, which this would have come out if we had had meetings or whatever, is that they can't be doing it out in the path of travel, they've got openings there.
So we notify them and we tell them that.
So if they move it over into the opening, when they're taking the boxes off, they're not blocking path of travel, I wouldn't be saying a word, I wouldn't be here. They said the law, I talked to the people, they said that the grills are fine, as long as they are not doing stuff in path of travel.
So your solution is get rid of the grills and take the fridges out of the truck and put them out, the grills are now, do that work now and keep the path of travel.
That would be compliant, it's, the thing is, when they have the grills out there, and then they're taking appliances out and doing that. I was told it's an either-or situation.
We were not told that.
Right.
I have no problem.
We were told that they were in the legal rights to have the grills there, and they're in the legal rights to take stuff and deliver it and bring it in off the street, as long as they're not blocking for prolonged time. The only way we can determine if it's prolonged time is if someone calls and says, hey, they've been out here a long time, can you come down and do something about it?
When I talked with the Department of Justice, they said that included opening and prepping stuff in path of travel. So when they're taking, it's, so that's where it becomes an either-or situation. They do have areas where they could tuck the stuff in, and do it without interfering in path of travel. But what they're doing is they're bringing out multiple, and I understand it's a time-saving thing, but they're putting multiple appliances out there, and then creating the situation.
Okay, I will contact the building inspector tomorrow and ask any contact Woodco about that particular issue, okay?
And I mean, other than that, it's, that's the whole thing, is if they leave path of travel open, they do the stuff tucked over out of the way, then that's fine. But that's not what's been happening.
I'll let them know, let him know that we've had some work done.
Then we'll see what happens, and again...
I mean, that would be fine, I'm just looking for compliance. And that would be excellent, and if...
We'll do that tomorrow.
If that gets accomplished, then we're all set, and that's it.
We'll forward it to the building inspector and go from there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Communications, anybody else wants citizens input? All right, communications, old business.
Well, I have communication before we move on, I just wanted to remind everyone about the town meeting that's coming up next week. It's Thursday, May 7th, at 7:00 PM, we have our annual town meeting, I believe we have 31 articles. The following Tuesday is May 12th, it's the town annual election, which will be from, polls will be open from 12 to 8, just a reminder. And all the information's on the website, and if you have any questions, please contact our office.
All right, old business, Sudden Block Scale Committee, yeah, Sudden Blocks Sale Committee Recommendations.
So in your packet, you do have a recommendation from the Sudden Block Sale Committee. So as you recall, there was a charge that was created by this board to have that property reviewed by a committee, advertise an RFP, solicit responses, and then evaluate them, and then provide a recommendation to you. So what we've got tonight, there's several members of the committee here tonight, there's Carol McPherson, Lynn Dobson, and Laura, who was here and just left. There's a couple other people on the committee that could not be here, I know Michelle Buck, who was the planner, who was instrumental in coordinating that committee, she has a selectmen's meeting tonight in Leicester, I believe. And so you have your recommendation, it's dated April 8th. So what I'd recommend tonight is that you, if you have any questions for the committee, you hear those, you can hear what they have to say. Any comments, you're free to ask them any questions, and then if you would like to discuss this, I could schedule an executive session, that if you feel like you wanna have that, you have the right to talk about real estate within executive session matters, or you could just take their recommendation and act on their recommendation tonight.
Okay.
That's it, yeah. So, do you have any other, do you have anything other than the memo that Michelle provided that you wanted to read, Carol? So just so everybody knows, the letter dated April 8th is rather short, I'll read it, it says, "As you're aware, the town will receive one response to the RFP for the sale. The Sudden Committee met on April 1st and April 8th to review and score the RFP in accordance with the comparative evaluation criteria that is attached. The submitted proposal received an average score of 26.5 out of a total possible score of 65. At the April 8th, 2015 meeting of the Sudden Block Sale Committee, the committee voted unanimously to advise the Board of Selectmen that the committee's preference is to reject the proposal, only having received one, and the score being rather low," I'm guessing is what they're gonna tell you. Committee members are available to attend the selectmen's meeting, and that is tonight, so with that, Carol's here and Lynn is here. Sorry if you wanted to talk about the process or anything else that you wanted to add.
I did do a report to the committee, because I sat down before the meeting and kinda put my thoughts down. As you know, we did not recommend the proposal that came before us. So I'll just read what I, what I said to the committee. I'm only speaking for myself at this point, this is not a committee report. "The response to the RFP was disappointing. We received one proposal from Robert Seppi of Jibola Properties 15 Marble Road, Spencer, Mass. I was disappointed in the response to the submission requirements, and the $5,000 offer was inadequate to even cover the cost of the legal bills to convey the property and create a right-of-way between the library and Sudden Block. The following is my recommendation, relist the RFP in the central register. If there is a lack of response to this relisting, consider hiring a management company to manage the property until the downtown revitalization project is completed. This would possibly encourage more interest by developers. Whether the present rents would cover the expense of the management company would have to be investigated. I found two management companies on the internet who apparently manage and provide maintenance and repairs to commercial properties. Perhaps this type of company could provide the necessary service to maintain the property until the market improves." And I have two companies that I don't know who they are or what they are, I did not speak to them, but they're... Thank you. They're people that provide repairs, maintenance, that sort of thing, so it was just a thought that personally, it isn't a good time economically, and we're in the midst of the revitalization, and maybe it's a better idea to wait until that's done, perhaps the center of town is going to be more attractive to a development. And that, it just occurred to me that maybe a management company, I know it's a problem for the town to take care of the property, I mean, that's the issue. You know, if we're gonna hold on to it, it's a problem, and it's been a problem for some time. But whether management companies would be interested in doing this sort of thing, I honestly don't know. I mean, they do rent out, I know, you know, they do condominiums and that sort of thing. But this, these two seem to be more than just collecting rents type of thing, they would do other things. So, you know, what kind of money they look at, whether they'd even be interested, I don't know. On a personal note, if we found that the property was only worth $5,000, and I don't know, there's a lot of problems there, and I'll say as a person, in my personal opinion, that I would prefer to tear it down, and that makes me very sad. I'm tearing up right now, because I didn't even wanna sell it. But for $5,000, you're gonna have a piece of property on Main Street that could make a pocket, packing lot, if you tore it down. And I think it's worth a lot more than $5,000 to the town to have that, maybe have a green area right around it or something. I think it's a shame to do that, I think it's a shame, and it's shame on us that we have not done what we needed to do to keep that property in good shape. But maybe we're at the point where that's where we're at, I really don't know. Nobody seems to have the stomach to take care of it, or the time, or the staff, or whatever, or the money. But for $5,000, I would hate to sell it. So that's where I'm coming, as a person, I'm not speaking for the committee at all.
I understand that, Carol.
Carol, when you say relisting, does that mean doing more, what you did before, doing something more aggressive, another avenue or another promotion?
Well, I would relist it in the central register, we did it in January, and I guess in my own mind, I wonder if that's a good time to do it, I have no idea. It was a terrible winter, just, maybe in the spring, maybe people are looking at things more, I, I was very discouraged with the interest. Now, why that is, I imagine the economy, I don't know, Lynn maybe wants to add some.
I think we did have, we did have multiple people pull the RFP, I mean, eight to 10.
They, they went on the website to ask about it, apparently, but according to Laura, some of them were clearing houses, and I would assume that what they do is they look, they look for development, and then they tell people about it that they have on their list. I don't know how all that works, but it wasn't, there were a lot, one was from California, one was from Florida. I mean, there were only four or five that were really in this area. There was one Boston, I think one near Boston, and I think two in Spencer, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Seppi did put in a proposal, I mean, good for him, but we didn't feel it was viable at this point.
Now, you had real estate folks on the commission, right, people in the...
Yes.
What was their instinct when it came to promoting, or what, did they have any particular explanation about, you know, why the lack of response?
I don't, I don't think we had any idea why. I think we were all very just surprised and disappointed.
Yes.
And we really thought that the possibility of the new, the new road reconstruction project coming up might have affected it, because they may wanna wait until all that's done before they decide to hop in. We don't know, we have no way of knowing.
On the other hand, if, you know, if someone purchasing it before that happened makes them a player and make, you know, can make them a more active participant in what happens downtown.
Right.
You think they'd wanna get in at that level and not, and not waiting later? I'm sorry, Gary, you about to say something?
No, I just, it's discouraging that this is what it comes down to. I will suggest that to the administrator, I would like to put this on an executive session for a discussion on what we should do next. If anyone doesn't mind, I think that, I think this is a critical piece of property with everything we're doing, and we really gotta think it out and figure out what the best route is to go at this point, so I'm in agreement, Carol, I mean, I don't know. Last resort you talked about is probably the hottest for anybody, as you all know, so.
I have no idea.
I mean, you know, and, and it's been a benefit for years, unfortunately, from the town side, and not personal feelings, but, you know, from a financial standpoint, and, and as we know, we don't have the funds to do what we should do. And our hope was that somebody could take that building. It's still a grand-looking building, but, uh-
It is.
So I, I would suggest that we put that on an executive session and digest this. The board could try to digest what happened here and see if there's any solutions.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's such a signature structure, and, and they don't, we're, we're lucky to have a downtown that's as intact as it is. I mean, it's so many of, you know, full of holes, and those sites just don't get rebuilt. It would be, that would, it would take a lot for, for me, probably, for this, this town to, this, this, this board to accept that as a, an acceptable alternative. We've, we've gotta go back and, and look at it, and maybe, I would say in that executive meeting, I, I would like to have as many members of the, the, you know, of the commission as well to talk. If that's, I know, if that, is, is that mean appropriate? Okay, just with, with that a kind of agenda, just to, to talk as, you know, as candidly as we can.
Well, I think many minds are better than just a single mind, so I, I think at that point, uh, this is critical. Uh, and it's a critical cornerstone of the town, literally.
It's right on the corner too.
So, I mean, you know, and it frustrates me that that's the proposed value, and I, and I get it, because anybody going in there is gonna have to put sprinklers once you change the use, and, and the cost to doing that is not cheap. So, uh, we know what we spend in there, and, and it's a losing proposition. So maybe we can come up with some solutions. Carol, thank you for your input, and thank you for this.
Thanks for the commission's work. It must be discouraging after all the time you folks put in to it as well.
To get to this point.
To have only one response like that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carol.
Just so unclear, now, why does that go into executive session?
Uh, we have the right, and there's like ten reasons you can go into executive session. One is to, is for the purposes of negotiating real estate.
Okay, so it's into some terms of contract potentially. Okay, all right.
Okay.
New business. Agricultural preservation restriction, small farm.
It's not quite new, but, um,
That's the one from before.
It's a new, new document. So the, as you know, we've gone, we've been talking about this the last couple of years, working with, um, Greater Worcester Land Trust and our local land trust, um, working to preserve the property known as a small farm. And, uh, we actually went to town meeting and we actually voted to contribute, uh, a few thousand dollars uh, to, three, uh, to, towards that. Our local land trust, uh, did the, uh, the other fundraising, and this is the final piece, which would be eventually recording what is known as a preservation restriction. So, pre- raise, preservation restriction is such that it'll, you know, it'll restrict them from doing any development on the property. There's a, there's a sale, uh, that the state would, you know, is the, is the providing the, the big chunk of the change, uh, for that purpose. Um, so they're basically purchasing the rights, uh, to protect the property. So these are, so as part of that, the town is involved in that. We are co-hosters of the restriction. There's some documents here being, that have been reviewed by the town council and, uh, prepared by the state, so um, you guys have to actually take a vote. Conservation Commission actually has to take a vote, um, to accept the agreements, and then they're looking to record these in May.
So Conservation's gonna do it first?
No, we can do it.
It doesn't matter. And this keeps it agricultural at that point.
Now, they separated the house, the barn-
Correct.
And that one lot on the corner, right?
Right.
Everything else is all the way down to the ball field.
Correct.
Yeah, down to the ball field, down to Seven Mile, yeah, onto Stretch.
Okay, and just so we're, we're clear, this is, unlike some, some open space options, which, which can be reversed and you pay back the, the tax benefits, this is, this is a permanent-
This is permanent.
Okay.
This is for-
The only way you can overturn this is through a legislative act.
Right, I, I thought it was, I did your commitment. So this is, there is currently, is there a, a buyer sort of waiting for this property, or this, this is?
No, well, the state's, so it's a couple of different things. One is the current owner is selling the rights, okay? So the state is gonna give them X amount of dollars in conjunction with fundraising, other fundraising, so that now they are basically buying the rights of the prop- development rights of the property, so it can't be developed. And then as part of that, there's a recorded restriction. The person who owns the property takes that money, do what, does whatever they want with it. They can turn around and then sell the property to someone else, but it has that restriction with it.
Which is part of the deed, that's why it gets recorded.
And the folks who are farming it now are, has it been a lease of it?
Yeah, that's, it's a lease.
And they can continue to lease, they can lease to someone else, they can sell, they can lease to some, you know, so.
It's Breezy Gods and Leicester.
Yes, as I recall, it, it puts it in a price range where it's practical to people to-
Well, and they can still lease land. They, they're in control of it other than they cannot sell it to a developer. This is a deed restricted, which means it's attached to the deed, so everybody that was to buy that land understands it stays in this agricultural category.
But whether it was this or another property, if a farmer who buys it doesn't have to pay the higher cost of, of a property that has potential development, that's a possibility, and that's what-
That is true.
That's what helps keep it in agriculture.
So, we need a motion to accept this, right?
Accept the co-hoster's agreement in addition to, there's two documents. One is the co-hoster's agreement.
Co-hosts.
And the second one is actually the restriction itself.
You wanna do them separate or combined?
No, fine. Together's fine.
So one is a co-host, right?
Agreement, yep.
Yep.
So, motion to accept that along with the acceptance of, uh-
Of the actual agricultural, agricultural preservation restriction.
Right. So they can record. That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So all we'll do is we're gonna prepare the actual page for signatures. And then we'll, they'll have to come in, we'll probably call you guys in or as you're in over the next couple of weeks, have you, uh, sign, and then have it notarized in front of the town clerk.
Alright. Then it's gonna go to Conservation.
They're doing the same thing.
Okay. Perfect.
All right, town administrator's report.
I actually don't have anything other than tell you that I'll, tomorrow I'm filming the question time with the moderator at the Cable Access. So Peter Adams and I will do a run-through of the warrant and the articles, uh, and then that'll be recorded and then shown over, uh, the course of the next week or two. So I already gave the dates and the times for the town meeting, the election as well. All the information's on the website. We've been talking about that since November, essentially. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
All right. Board liaison reports, ready? All right, citizens input again. Anybody want to speak? Boy, we're doing good, though. All right, board members and staff carpets.
The only thing I have is, uh, yesterday I, uh, got to attend, uh, Jamie Laney's Eagle Scout Award. Uh, I was here with Representative Berthium. It was a good turnout, and it's amazing the amount of work that these kids put into, uh, becoming that. What I found interesting out of the whole thing was prior Eagle Scouts, Kevin Grace, the dentist, was there. He's an Eagle Scout, uh, and it's amazing, Dean Stevens was there. And I happened to be at work today talking about it, and the kid who does my internets is, yeah, I'm an Eagle Scout, so that took care of about two hours of my day. No, I'm just kidding. But, uh, it's amazing what these kids go through and the dedication and the work. And they do appreciate the recognition from the board. I thought it was pretty good. Uh, I know his parents were very proud, so hats off to them. It was a long journey, so that's what I got.
Sure, you get it.
I do not.
I guess we're ready for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. Don't forget the town meeting.